All regular members present are welcome to put a fellow member's name forth for consideration, including their own. The Chair and the Vice Chair will then be elected by a majority vote. The term of these officers will officially begin at next month's meeting. So first, we'll accept any nominations for Chairperson of the Planning Board and then vote on this nomination, these nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jeff LeClair for Chair.
Thank you. And seconded?
You don't need a second.
Okay. Jan wanted to get to it first, but...
Yes.
Any other nominations for any of the members for Chair of the Planning Board? Okay, we'll hold the vote. All in favor of electing Jeffrey LeClair Chair of the Rockport Planning Board?
Just by acclamation.
Acclamation?
Acclamation?
Yes.
Okay, hold the vote. Did I see hands?
Everybody.
Two, three, four, five, six, and I guess that's everyone. So six, and by vote, I'm selected. Thank you very much to those who nominated me. Hope to fill Joe's shoes, which are big. So now vote on our nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to personally nominate Sam Clark as Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you.
Any other nominations? Okay, let's hold a vote. Vote for Sam Clark for Vice Chair of the Planning Board?
Acclamation.
Acclamation, six, zero, zero. Thank you very much. So like I said, the official date of start of these chairships is next month for some reason, and that's what's written in our bylaws. So the next agenda item on our list is to approve the minutes from last month's Planning Board meeting dated June 27th. So we have those on the screen. Yes.
Oh, moved. A move we approve.
Move we approve, oh, great. So, motion to approve the meeting minutes as edited in the document shown before us. Has everyone had a chance to review this? Or do they want to review anything additional to this, what's in the document?
Have people actually gone through it lately?
I did.
I made some changes today.
I haven't reviewed your changes, but I've...
Yeah, I haven't seen a change.
This morning.
Let's go through it, then, to make sure that we're all in favor of what's been changed. Okay, is there a way, okay, see the changes here.
Let me zoom in a little bit for you.
Yeah, I just changed the name Rogers to the way it was spelled in the application. Are those red marks there, changes that were made, Orion?
Yeah.
Oh, those are yours, Tom, okay.
Mostly mine, I think.
Okay, so then, these are mostly of syntax?
A lot of it, it's just to clarify, maybe a couple grammatical changes and to clarify some of the language.
Okay.
Nothing substantive.
Okay. Well, I guess we can just quickly, you know, scan over these to see if there's anything that everyone jumps at. Speaking of which, I assumed, Scott, that you're a full member at this point. I should have seated if you weren't.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks good to me. So we have a motion on the table. Is there a second to approve the minutes or any other?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Sam, moved by Scott. Any other further discussion on these? All in favor? Approve the meeting minutes? Six, zero, zero. Great. So the next item, which is listed here as item four, is a zoning change request for a parcel located at 120 Porter Street, Rockport, Maine, identified as MAP 9 Lot 11, owned by Douglas and Rebecca LaLiberty. This request is being represented by Douglas and Rebecca LaLiberty unless somebody else is here to request that they be represented. And so at this time, our folks, sorry, I don't identify you, but are you here to represent that parcel or are you members of the public?
Yes, I'm Peter LaLiberty, Doug's dad.
Okay.
He was on a plane today, but it was very late.
Okay.
And so I just drove here to try to represent him.
Okay, and do we have authorization for representation?
Yes, I have an email from Doug. I got that moments before the meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Peter, if you'd like to, you can step up to the, or the seat at the podium or table here, just so that we can hear you across the mic.
I was not anticipating this earlier today until I got a phone call.
Okay.
So I will do the best I can.
We'll try not to do too much in the hot seat, but I'm sure there's a few questions for you. So this was presented in letter form, which hopefully you can pull up, yes, by the owners of the parcel and applicants to create, or to change the designation from 908 Rural to 902 Village. And it included more information in this description than I think is necessary to consider for the zoning change, including what they plan on doing with the lot, but I think that's part of what we can discuss, as to what the intent of the zoning change would be. So if you'd like, you can speak to why this request is being put forward.
Nothing will be changed in a great way by the zoning change, except instead of having a very, two very oblique kind of odd lots, they'll be able to square off the lots and have two normal-looking parcels. Doug and Rebecca are in the middle of building a house now, so there's an existing house on the almost seven-acre parcel, and they're building another one which is perfectly legitimate and been approved. And what they'd like to do eventually is sell the house up above when they complete theirs. They haven't actually, I don't think they've actually put, by surveying the two parcels separately, the way they would like to see it, because the bank asked them to wait until the building was finished, and they're not at that point yet, probably another two months, something like that. So ultimately, they'd like not to have to rent it or not to have to make these funny-looking parcels. There's a piece diagonally across the road, and I honestly can't tell you who owns it that's in the same zone as he's asking to go into. The other option would be to create a 904 zone, which, you know, I don't know that there's anyone on the road in that, but it sort of would make everyone compliant. I think quite a few of the houses on the road don't fit with the zone it's in now. So he's looking to be part of the village zone. Beyond that, any questions I can answer or try?
So let me just speak to what the process for a zoning change request is, as I understand it, is that in this meeting tonight, we review the application. We either recommend or do not recommend it to the Select Board. Then the Select Board will discuss it and then recommend it to the voters or not put it on the town warrant in November. Is that correct, Orion?
On any ballot.
On any ballot.
Yeah, they could be in November or they could say in June.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. So what we're doing here is not actually voting on approval or disapproval of the change itself here, but to pass it along to some...
Now that you say that, I did see that in Doug's notes.
Yeah.
Somewhere, yeah.
So what we're looking at here is a map showing the parcel with a yellow smiley face on it, and several parcels which have stars on them, and I think those stars represented non-conforming lots in some way. They represented lots that perhaps were...
That's what it says, yes.
Undersized for the zone that they're in.
It doesn't say why, it just says they're non-conforming lots.
Right, it just says non-conforming.
Right, but knowing that our rural lots are three acres as a minimum, those were all smaller lots that seemed to have been cut off at a previous time and then rezoned out into a different spot. So now they don't conform in that piece, but that area has been deliberately made into 908, knowing that those lots existed in advance.
Right.
But just trying to preserve that area, it seems like.
And the 902 zone doesn't directly abut it. It's sort of across the street, but it looks like it changes and diverts within a lot, perhaps to the east and then goes north. So this would be, under the applications put before us, a lot separate, sort of surrounded by 908, if we were to change it to 902, or...
Correct, it's not an abutting property to the 902 zone.
Right, it's not directly abutting.
I have two questions. One is, just for the record, the stars that are said to indicate non-conforming lots, who's made the judgment that those are non-conforming? Is that the applicant that has made the judgment, or is that from the town?
I don't think Orion put those stars on.
I didn't put those stars on. These are from the applicant, no.
Yeah, so I think it is important to determine whether or not they actually are all non-conforming or not.
So I can speak to that. They are non-conforming based on ordinance, because they're not three acres, but are they legal or illegal? That's going to be the determining factor there. And the only way that's going to be determined is if there's a full analysis on when that lot was split, and then compare that to the ordinance at the time.
Okay.
And non-conforming does not mean that they belong to a village zone. It means that they are non-conforming with respect to the rural zone, and they were probably that way when the ordinance was adopted. That's what makes them non-conforming.
And it really doesn't make any difference to what the requesters want, as to whether they are non-conforming lots or not. That's just a side issue that has nothing to do with their request to change the zoning.
Well, they're putting that in as a reason for a zone change.
But I can't imagine why it would be a reason for a zone change.
Well, if, it could be a reason, not necessarily for a single lot zone change, but it could be a zone change across the whole border of Porter Street.
Do we have a request from anybody else in any of those lots to change it?
You don't have to initiate a zoning change through a request. I mean, the zoning, whoever does the zoning and the planning could say, this is what makes sense for us to do, because the usage, we've got all these non-conforming lots, and it would make sense for us to rezone this whole area, instead of like cherry-picking one lot, to say the whole area should have its zone changed, and that could be a recommendation to the Select Board.
But I guess where I was going is, if, assuming these stars do indicate truly non-conforming lots, which you said, then the question is, were they, if they were non-conforming at the time the zoning was established, then the fact that there are non-conforming lots would not argue to change the zoning, because that was already known when the zoning was established.
Ah, but when we have non-conforming lots, it's very clear in the land use ordinance, no division of any lot may be made, which leaves the lot's area, lot coverage, or frontage below the minimum requirements of the ordinance, which worsens an existing nonconformance or creates a new nonconformity.
I understand that. Here's my, just to be clear, my point is, if these were non-conforming at the time that region was zoned 908, then the town already made the decision that that was a 908 zone and accepted those as nonconforming, and therefore the presence of non-conforming lots is irrelevant to the request to make.
Right, you could certainly argue that, yeah.
I would also.
Yeah, I think it's a valid demonstration, but I don't necessarily think it applies.
Right. So then, that was my first question. My second question is, I didn't see anywhere in the, so it seems to me this is currently one lot, not two lots. You said it's two parcels, but it's not.
I think it's currently one. I think you're right about that.
And there's nowhere in the application shown the proposed division of the two. Is that correct?
No. Or a driveway to get access to the larger portion that they're representing that borders Chickawaki Pond.
Okay.
I guess that evidence isn't something that is necessary for the zoning change request, but is something that would be very helpful to understand whether it's even a feasible change to make.
Yeah.
Because if you were to divide the lot in such a way that you created two lots which perhaps conformed with the 902 zone, but you can't get to one of them, or it creates some other kind of nonconformity, like, we don't know that yet. We don't know if that easement that I think says CMP disallows, you know, the lot from being divided in the way that they want to. I don't know. There's perhaps evidence that isn't germane to this change, but would be very helpful to know.
But what is, why is not the intended use of the new lot, the 5.76 acre lot, why is its intention not relevant to our decision-making? Because with five and a half or five and three-quarter acres, at 20,000 square feet per lot, you can make a dozen home lots out of this, and I'm not sure that we would ever want to encourage development there. And yet, we were being asked to change the zoning to one which would allow small home development, residential village development, in what is now a rural area, and we are not being given any reason for dividing this lot, other than the possibility of development.
I think it is important to, for us to consider what is going to be proposed as a use, but it's also important for us to consider what that zone allows and what it could possibly be by the zones, what the zone allows. So if the zone allows, you know, something that's, like, I know it wouldn't, but some industrial use, then we should consider that that's a possibility of future development here.
Which means we're going to, we have to take into consideration the possibility that this be divided into X number of 20,000 square foot lots.
Which could be problematic since it's on Chickawaki Pond.
Yes, indeed.
Well, the other, and the other thing is...
Since it's surrounded by rural zone.
Could this entire parcel be divided in two and still meet the requirements of the rural zone? I didn't even look that up. What is, what's the minimum lot size?
Three acres is minimum, and this is a seven-point-something acre lot.
That's a great question, because it's like, if it's just two lots...
They almost could, except if some of it is wetland, it wouldn't be buildable anyway.
No, it's not buildable, but it still counts.
Yes.
As a lot. So at seven acres, it could be divisible into two.
Yeah.
We don't have an indication of where the two homes are.
We don't.
Well, there's one.
There's one shown, but we don't.
If you look at the tax map, if you look at the tax map, you see that there's a structure close to Porter Street.
Yes.
Yes.
But we don't see where the new one is.
Oh, no, true.
No, no, there's a house there, a house on that address.
But we were told there's one under construction as well, and we don't know where that is.
We don't know where that is.
That's true.
Please.
Points that might be germane, the other house is almost directly down the hill, and I think one of Doug's neighbors is here, and he can speak to that as well. I know Doug and Rebecca are perfectly willing to stipulate that there would only be two houses on this parcel forever. They're not looking to subdivide. They're even willing to give some of the wetland area, set it aside, if that's appropriate. They're really looking just to build a residence and free up another one for someone else in the town, and apparently you're short of a lot of housing, and free up another place that someone else could live. But they would be very happy to stipulate that there'll be no development, that there would only be these two properties. I think they're looking for this to maybe be approved enough so it moves forward along the process and...
So, Orion, does this constitute an application?
Well, so one of the things when you're considering zone changes, does it abut, you know, the zone that it's wanting to come over to? That's a conversation I think you all touched on a little bit. I think the board should make a determination on if it abuts, and we can pull up a zoning map there. And then, I mean, you've hit on it already, the request is to split it into two. Is there enough acreage on this lot already to do that, to satisfy it, is another one? But before we get into making a determination, you also need to open it for public comment, which I'm sure you'll do, but...
Yes, I was just about to say, do we have any online comments that we should...
I don't know. Jeff would know that.
Okay.
Nothing. So mail?
We had two mailed letters.
Two mailed letters, which you need to acknowledge, at least that you've had them in receipt. You can read them if you would like, but at least acknowledge receipt of the two letters.
Has any, I don't, you asked this, has everyone had a chance to look at those letters?
Yes.
Because they came in just today or yesterday or something?
Yes, today.
And usually we ask for 72 hours or something?
Yeah, well, yeah, so that was a conversation with an attorney a long time ago about another thing. He said you should technically accept them after you, we ask for it 72 hours in advance, but...
Yeah, so, open it to public comment if there's any other members of the public that would like to speak to this application for free. Hearing none, close to public comment.
My question is, is this an application or a pre-application?
This is neither.
It's a zoning request.
It's not a site plan review, so it's just, and we're not approving it, we're just recommending a change or not.
Okay. Well, I would think, in courtesy to the submitter, since I personally don't feel that I have enough information to be comfortable making a change in the zoning, that we treat this as a pre-app and advise the, what we would like to see more information that we feel we're missing in order to make a decision on it, and let them come back. No prejudice whatsoever, let them come back and with the information that we want, and then we can have that conversation.
Okay, well, I think when you say no prejudice whatsoever...
No prejudice, meaning, I mean, it's a legal term, but it simply means that we are not saying, by not doing as the applicant asks, we are not saying we won't ever do what the applicant asks. We're simply saying, we're not capable of making a decision based on what we have. We would encourage a more thorough set of facts or due drives or whatever we decide.
If I'm reading into it, Jan, it sounds like you are not comfortable making a decision for it at this point.
That's my, that's my, that's my point, that's all, yes.
And you'd like more information?
I would like more.
I think it would be fairer to the applicant to hear everybody's concerns that they have them tonight, and if that's prejudging it, so be it, but I think that having those all aired tonight would be fair to them.
That's right.
So I'd like to, you know, just encourage anybody's position on it.
Well, I'm willing to state my position. I would not want to see one lot isolated with, as 902, even though it is close proximity. If it were actually bordering the lot, and it was a question of just extending that, you know, like, one lot further, that would be a different story. But to have something, to have 902, and then have this lot over here, 902, that's why I said initially that it would be, to me, more a question of the people who are responsible for making modifications to the zoning, to decide whether in fact it would be reasonable to extend the whole 902, not to one lot.
Right.
Yeah, my feeling is similar, which is that it doesn't make sense to just, because it seems that the single justification is so that they can divide off and sell that other home, it doesn't make sense to just pick a parcel and rezone it for that purpose. I recognize that we're missing some information, but I don't think any of that information would change my position on this, because, yes, I'd like to see where they're proposing to divide it and where the house is, but my feeling would remain the same, it's more curiosity. In terms of rezoning the entire thing, I think there's a reason that the properties bordering Chickawaki are not zoned village, and that's because it's a septic system area and we don't want higher density.
That could very well be.
And so I think it's dangerous to think about starting to rezone a property that is on Chickawaki into a higher-density zone, so I'm opposed.
Hear the thoughts, Sam Robb?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to kind of add to it, but I mean, it is very similar. The additional information would satisfy curiosity, but I don't think it changes the opinion on this piece. I mean, the applicant stated preference for not having to be a landlord or to not have two oblique lots, that as a preference, and I'm sure that is fine, but it is not necessarily something we want to introduce this level of change, where it is not an abutting lot as part of our practice. Obviously, it goes to the town to vote on after that piece, but I don't, this is not something I would normally look to recommend without extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, same thing. I just, reading through, I didn't see any precedent for doing something like this. It's previously, we've made narrow exceptions if a lot is divided into two zones and it just doesn't make sense, but this would kind of just be a spot exception, and that could be a slippery slope, unfortunately.
I think, and this was asked, I think, maybe it wasn't, the comprehensive plan is often something we refer to to get some sense of, like, what did the people who wrote the plan intend for, say, a neighborhood or a village to, how it should be read and what the extensive it were? And in another case last year, in the same neighborhood, we extended the zone, because the comprehensive plan actually alluded to it, that, you know, it was against a rural zone, but it actually should possibly go up the street a little bit more. It's sort of, almost like they were acknowledging that they hadn't drawn it right or something. But I couldn't find anything in the comprehensive plan that characterized this street, which name I'm forgetting now.
Porter Street.
In the way that was, as it was to be read as a village, and I think one of the letters we got from the public was saying that this is a wooded street, and it felt to that person like it was the rural zone, was appropriate. So I think we'd be getting out in front of the next comprehensive plan if we made this change, and I think that that's where it should be decided, is where the borders should be. It seems like, and I know this is, I'm just reading it graphically, that if we had the 902 zone and then just one lot sticking out, which barely touches the 902 zone, it just reads like, what was that? That reads as clear a spot zoning as it can be to me. So I would also not be in favor of this change.
It's probably also worth noting that we only received two comments from the public in both of those two.
That's true. So I don't know if we have a motion to not approve?
Yes.
Is that what we do?
Yeah, you make a motion to whichever, so we start with...
Yeah. Willing to make a motion when we...
Yeah, a move that we not recommend the request as presented.
Okay. Seconded by Scott. Any other discussion on this? So the motion is to not recommend the change request as presented tonight for MAP 9 Lot 11. Okay. Vote, all in favor to not recommend? Six, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Am I able to ask what options are available to them in the future?
If they want to sell that lot?
Well, that's perfectly willing to divide it equally and, you know, indicate that there would not be any further development. They'd like to find a way to do that.
If they can comply with the requirements of the rural zone, then they would be allowed to subdivide the lot.
Okay, and their, and their 7.81 or whatever it is acres allows them to do it even though there's a small piece of wetland?
And we have frontage requirements and everything.
I think they meet that.
Right, so, yeah, exactly. So there's a, the minimum lot size for rural is three acres, so technically you have two lots' worth of land there inside of the current piece. Whether or not the... Whether or not those two, those two subdivided lots could be drawn so that they meet the yeah, exactly, the the dimension requirements for that, for each of those lots. So that's the piece of amount of road frontage, amount of different pieces that come along with that.
Each would need to be three.
Each would have to be three acres, but they would, what they would both have to have the correct dimensions in order to.
Include setbacks.
Right, exactly, on the inside of those pieces. So there's, and and that stuff will be able to the people will be able to make those decisions. Like, you can take that to a local engineer and look down at all those different pieces and figure out if they can actually do that or not fairly quickly, I'm guessing, outside of that.
I mean, the comprehensive plan committee, I mean.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean.
There's an argument to be made there with whether the neighborhood should include that lot and its adjacent lots, but I'm pretty sure they're not going to carve out one lot in that in that plan.
Yeah, both requests to the comprehensive plan committee, but also if there's ever slots available. Recommend that if anybody has anything they want to change, the civic duty and volunteerism is the way to get it done. So recommend that if they want to have input in what that committee has, if they have the opportunity and they have the room, that is a good spot for it.
Any other ways, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's enough land there based on the ordinance that it could be split. And I've I've spoken with Doug about it. He's had some difficulties with surveyors. That's how I'll leave it. So.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay, moving on. Amendments to planning board bylaws was on our agenda, but I don't think we had the planning board bylaws in the doc, in the folder to review. I mean, I.
No, I didn't. I didn't put them in there. I left them in the.
I found them there too.
It was a link in the prior email.
They're around, yeah.
Yeah, he sent them in a prior email.
Oh, did he? Okay, my my apologies.
Yeah, and I had an older version in my on my computer, so. Yeah, I'm not sure what my what version mine was, but my comments may not be appropriate.
I have no suggestions.
No suggestions.
What are the dates? What's the date line on the last?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. Although we did review this last year.
I just don't think there's any changes.
I put some notes on one of them. There was a Word doc.
This is, this is the Word doc.
That's the Word doc.
Um, you're probably in there. I'm just, I'm just at the top.
Now I can, it's fine.
Right.
Go to the admin folder in SharePoint.
So I had reviewed this this week and then recalled this process of looking at it last year. But I could not remember if we had picked up the changes that we talked about last year. We just sort of like, no, it's fine. And I felt kind of the same way this year, which is like, it's it's fine.
Yeah, I I don't remember last year's, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, if y'all got some changes you want to make, let's.
I put some changes on.
I've got lots of changes. Yeah, there's a lot of places where I think it's.
Let's discuss it.
Okay. Probably one of the the main ones is, I think that for section four duties. The last two items don't really belong under duties. They belong under meetings. And I think we need an additional one that we have now, we have now decided that we have to do findings of fact. And I think that there should be an item number F that's get that addresses that we do findings of fact and that they be stored along with the minutes under the, under the town zone, lock and key or whatever it is. Making finding of fact mandatory. Do we want a minimum age for members or not? We don't do anything? Oh, and one thing that 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 does come up to me is we say that you can, um, under section three A, maximum length of continuous service shall be nine years. And we are appointing people for three-year terms. In my case, at least, I was appointed to fill a year of a term. If I have to limit to to nine years, I can't be, I can't go for three years, that would make a ten. So can we make it limited to to three consecutive full terms or something like that?
I actually think that they, do we need a term, like, do we need to term people out or can?
It's really good practice. If you you look at town, other towns, and I could name a few, where people have been on boards for twenty years and thirty years, they own the town. And they have, they are not responsible to anybody because nobody can get them off. So I think that it is really good good cleanliness habit to to turn people out, at least for a year or for a term or something like that. Then welcome them back for another set if they wish to. But we need to have, we need to have younger people. We need to do it. If we all sat here for the rest of our lives, where would the next generation of people have? Because we're not, we're not elected.
I was just concerned, I mean, when I started, it was a struggle to get any members, so I just, and John had termed out. So I guess my thinking was like, do we, is this something we want or are we? But if we want it, I mean, I'm not opposed, just offering an office.
Yeah, John termed out and then became an alternate.
Right.
Which, who was seated almost at every meeting.
Right.
And I wondered whether that was legal or not.
I think it is.
I don't see word, I don't see is or isn't, so, yeah. I just, that came up.
Your point is, your point is good though, Jan.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a point, that's all. Whether it's good or bad, I'm not quite sure.
With the fact that you pointed out where you were serving a partial term.
Yeah.
And it would not make sense for your your service to just end after nine years if it was like in the beginning of a a year.
Well, it would be, it would be two-thirds of the way through a term.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Where my ninth year would be, and then somebody else would have, the seat would be inherited that way.
It would get thrown off.
Yes, completely. So I think it should, we make it three consecutive full terms.
I mean, we, uh, shall be appointed to the select board to serve for staggered three-year terms expiring on June thirty, right, which means not all of our service starts at the same time. So if you have one that leaves a year, you know, I mean, if you have to, if your nine years is up and your term is two years into a three-year term. The next person comes in, starts a three-year term and starts their nine years of service, right, and it's not going to affect anything because all of our start times are staggered depending on what year we came in.
That's right. They started, they started that way, but then people have resigned or moved away, so it's gotten all, it's gotten all bollocks.
They're still staggered.
No, they're not completely staggered.
Not completely, but they're they're at this point randomized. And I guess my point of that is that's gonna, it's not gonna hurt anything by by keeping it as a nine-year total versus trying to have it three full terms plus whatever piece you got from before.
Yeah.
The next nine-year section is available.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true too.
Right, so I think nine years is nine years and then trying to set that up so that somebody ends up can be eleven years. Like, what's the point of having the nine-year piece? You can just move it to eleven to account for all those possible cases, or you leave it at nine and you make sure that, like, with the staggered start times, that's not a big deal.
Well, let's, let's think about this first. Do we think that nine years is the right amount of time for any one member to serve? Or should it be longer? Eleven years and three hundred and sixty-four days.
Well, I've, I've seen, I've seen nine years in many, in many nonprofits.
Yeah.
As as a term for directors at nonprofits, it's three-year terms, three all.
Because if you were appointed, if you were appointed to the board one day after the term actually should have started, and this is a bonkers hypothetical.
Yeah.
Then that's not a full term, so then you get two years, three hundred and sixty-four days, plus three more three-term.
Right, so you're one day off of twelve years at that point.
Yeah.
And that's fine. If we say, you know, we want it to be the maximum like continuous service shall be twelve years, then we're home, right? And we just don't have to worry about that next piece, but like, whatever it is, I think we just stick to that number and then just say it's that number.
Or the other thing to do is just to ask the select board, when there's, when there's an interruption in a term, pick somebody for three years, start a new term with them.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Again, these are changes that we don't make unilaterally. The select board has to approve these changes.
Of course.
So you mentioned a few things, Jan, and I didn't want to give short shrift to any one of them. I think you started in the section.
Not to, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just want to, so, we didn't have seven members at that time, right? So why did you fill in?
Because one of our members was arrested.
Yeah, no, but why wouldn't they just give you a?
But they didn't. They let, they they assigned me to fill out.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering. I didn't know if they had.
One, one, one year. And it, see, it's interesting, because I agreed to do the one year, because then if I didn't like it, I was not obligated to do the next two.
Right.
So there's something to be said for that as well. I mean, that happened several times when when I was on the budget committee. Somebody would quit, somebody would get appointed, and they would take it. Not knowing whether they wanted or not, but the idea that it was only for one year brought them a little more confidence to come in and come in and do it. So there's, there's something to be said for doing it.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I just don't know what, maybe you should, maybe I should leave after nine years. Somebody else will get it. Life, things could be worse.
I mean, I think we all agree that there, having a limit makes sense. Do we, do we all agree that nine years makes sense as our current limit?
I think so.
I am, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yeah.
I saw that.
All right, hearing no dissent on that, I think we can move past this, please.
Okay, okay. Just in terms of of how this is organized, section four officers, the duties, the last two, I and J, really belong in how meetings are run. That is, meetings are stored and so forth. They should run there. And I would, the same time that I would move those there, I would add an item K or another third item, whatever it is, to discuss it, just like the the maintenance of the minutes that we that we maintain for public record findings of fact. Because we've now agreed to do that.
Isn't that in here?
Well, it says we, it says we could do that.
Okay, so.
It says we could do that. I think we should say that we do do that.
This is vexed me, um, but I think there's a distinction between the minutes and the findings of fact. The findings of fact are the legal requirement and record of what was done.
Right, but it's not, it's not in the bylaws.
Right, and the minutes are the recording of, the official recording of what happened in the meeting.
Correct. I'm just saying that the that the findings of fact should be treated like the minutes, that is, they should be stored and and made public as as necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a, the findings of fact is kind of a new requirement, isn't it, Orion, that we have a separate?
No, it's new, it's new to y'all.
Yeah, so what?
No, it's, it's, it's been a thing for quite a while. It's just, report hasn't done it, but no one's appealed it.
Had to be separate from the minutes?
Correct.
Well, if it's new to us, then it probably should be in the bylaws, I think, as Jan says.
I'm trying to see if I, where, where it's mentioned.
Yeah, it's in there somewhere. I can't find it either.
Seven, section seven B.
Seven B.
That's not it.
This is May.
Board may adopt some findings of fact. But I think what.
Where did I say?
Is that true, Orion, that we, it's a, it's a may or is it a must?
It's a must.
It's a must.
So every decision that you'll make, except for this particular example, because it's not a decision. Every site plan decision, subdivision decision, those decisions, there's findings of facts, conclusions of law.
Right.
It is a must.
So as members of the board are saying, should that not be?
Shall.
Shall.
Yeah.
Yes.
It should be.
So you want to make that change as a proposed edit?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Or who did that? Somebody typed it, Orion.
I did it.
Findings of fact and conclusions of law. I have a question for Orion.
Come on.
There is a thing in our town ordinance that's called the planning board ordinance, and then there's a separate document called the planning board bylaws. And it seems as though most of what's in the planning board ordinance exists within the bylaws. But we don't have any authority over the ordinance that's at the select board level.
You can make a recommendation for it to be changed, but the ordinance creates this.
Right.
That's what that is.
But it also is repeated in this document. Just want to clarify that it wasn't, that was the case.
Well, this has to be approved by the select board.
This has to be approved by the select board, but it would be, uh, we've got duplicate ordinances essentially. What what duplicate language, one in an ordinance, one in a bylaw. And so there is the risk that we make a change, I don't think any of these are them, that we make a change to the planning board bylaws without changing the ordinance, so.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance allows us to exist as a body.
But it also says things about how we're going to vote.
I don't, I don't know. The item that I was looking for, section seven, number B.
To change the ordinance that goes to town vote, right?
I think so. There's some ordinances that the select board.
选定 findings of fact by voting, right, using a checklist or similar work product. It says it may, I should say.
Right, that's what you change in here.
Right, okay. Oh, I got it. Okay. That's all I have. Of interest. Oh, um, procedure six C. Or procedures.
Putting procedures at seven.
Five, section six, number five, C five, the chair may reopen, close public hearing with the consent of most of the members present. Should be a majority of the members.
It is now. I changed that already, Jan.
Okay, I had, then I will, I, see, I'm not, I'm not able to get into the system, so I didn't see the changes that you would make. Tom, I should have known you would have gotten that. It's your kind of thing.
Yeah, for instance, the Rockport Planning Board ordinance says the term of each member shall be three years, except the initial appointments, which was like when this was crafted. So it just says three years, and then it says the maximum length of continuous service on the Rockport Planning Board shall be nine years. So if we made a change to our bylaws, it would need to also happen at the ordinance level.
Unless we took the words from the ordinance and put it into our bylaws.
True.
Thank you. Yeah, that is correct.
That we don't have to ignore the select board.
Right.
Okay, I think, again, I was talking about ordinance changes are are done by town vote versus bylaw changes, which is select. So we do that piece, but we can, if we make a change to that that needs to go to that piece, then we have to make that recommendation that it goes to the select board and it goes to ballot, and then it gets, makes the change.
No, no, only if we want to change the ordinance. I'm saying, use.
That is correct.
Use the language of the ordinance in our, in our.
Yep, and I'm talking about what Jeff was saying, which was that if we wanted to make a change to the bylaw that was contrary to, was written into the ordinance, we would also need a town vote to get the ordinance changed. That's what we're talking about. I think we're on the same page now. Here we go. What's the next piece?
We leave it as it is, then we don't need to do anything about it.
That's correct.
So we reviewed a couple things. Were there other items within the bylaws that we wanted to look at?
Well, I made some changes. Did you?
Yeah, I've been seeing.
We could start at section four, yeah, because I made a change there. Right there. And when I was thinking of that, Joe termed out, so he is not, he's not here to run the meeting. And what if you were absent? Then we'd sit here and we'd say, what do we do?
That occurred to me. That occurred to me.
So this was, this was to, in that, I I admit it's a far-fetched thing, but at least. but at least this gives you a solution, if you had not shown up, I would have opened nominations, we would have elected a chair, and that chair would then conduct the rest of the meeting.
But I don't think that's necessary because of C.
C, yeah.
Because of who?
Item C says if both the chair and the vice chair are absent, a temporary chair shall be appointed by the chair, or if necessary, elected by a majority of the board president at the meeting.
Yeah, that's it.
Duh.
That's the sign.
Sorry.
Take it out. Never mind, one thing that I wondered was, why do we wait for the next meeting? Why can't we elect a chair and vice chair and then run the meeting? Or is it just not worth the trouble?
I mean, that occurs, that occurs once.
Yeah, I thought about that too.
Now, would you be for once a year?
If this needs to go ahead.
Perhaps.
It's only in the case of retirement of the chair.
Okay, forget it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, if we were writing this whole cloth, we wouldn't have written it that way, but some things are just, just let it slide.
Okay, the other thing, in section five, it says we're gonna hold the meetings in the Rockport Opera House, period. But then we had that, the water damage here, and all of a sudden, we're over at the library. So I would say, I just put in there, if that venue's available.
I don't know why it's in there at all.
Or you think that's?
I think we should just say we hold it once a month in a public venue.
Yeah, I mean, we held it online, not me, but prior to.
That's entirely online.
We don't have to, we don't have to, a building, because there's a notice that has to be published beforehand that tells you to public where to go.
And an announcement.
That makes sense.
And an announcement. Yeah.
Scott, do you have a piece about that?
No, I agree, I don't think we need, I don't think we need to say where it's going to be held.
Okay, thanks.
If you do that, then it tells when.
Somebody can change that.
Mind you that you're on mic.
And how often do we know at this meeting that there's going to be a change for the next meeting? I mean, I just think that's unrealistic to, to say, oh, yes, we know there's going to be a change for the next meeting now, so we'll vote on it at this meeting, and that's what the bylaws says.
In terms of, uh, date, time, and place, yeah?
Yeah, if you're going to change.
You, you were saying that we, we would know with less.
I'd say usually if that happens, there's, there's a reason for the apple cart getting upset, and so if there's a logistical necessity, then the chair should be able to specify a, a new meeting date, right?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, it happens every year for Thanksgiving. We would normally meet on Thanksgiving, we don't. The chair says when we're gonna meet, and we meet. So I, I think, I think we're, we're covered here, because at, before Thanksgiving, we say, okay, instead of Thanksgiving, we're meeting on the following Tuesday.
Yeah, but it could, there could be something wrong, just like we had the frozen pipes and have to change.
Right, so I think the, the piece behind this is to remember that this is for, you know, we're not trying to catch every case scenario. Like, if there's an emergency and you mean to make a, a venue change at the last minute, that's an emergency and that's covered by emergency. This piece is just, it's just stating that we have the ability to do things like wave off a meeting that's gonna land on a holiday, but we do it by vote in advance, which is the way you should do that, like, the changes that need to happen in reaction to something that's.
I concede.
Like, just, just trying to keep the language as clean as possible, right, that's all right.
I'm being a little bit anal compulsive here.
That's all right, this, this is, having good discussion about the exactness of the words and the things that we use, both to guide us and what we're reviewing, is a good thing to have.
Don't apologize for that.
So are we keeping the last change? Are we getting rid of it?
So somebody, who, did Rob make?
We're gonna, we're gonna pull that one out.
The changes in C down below.
That was not me.
Who made those?
Orion.
Oh. No, it says, it says, Rob.
RD. Oh, and.
What, are you talking about five C?
I'm talking about, yes, five C. Five, in fact, five A.
Yeah, there, there was, there was something in the, this was from a long time ago.
Five C.
This was twenty twenty-two, for whatever reason, so I don't know if that's, we discussed it, we didn't make some changes or what, or if it's from an old Word doc, I don't know, but there was a conversation before about, uh, the agendas, they were all just set by the chair, and then there was like conversations about that, and having coordination with me to help set those agendas, because the applications are coming into me, so I do the proposed, send it to the chair, the chair says yes, no, or we're gonna move this, and then that, that's kind of the relationship that's proposed here. So, that's how we've been doing it.
That makes sense.
Okay, keep it the way it is.
On E, I made that change to make it consistent with what is in, what's the language in public participation, having to do with comments at workshops.
Yeah, I, I actually wrote this in, in my comments. I think that we should open it up for, at least give the opportunity for the chair to.
Right, you made, you made a comment.
Like, at those workshops, we've taken comments.
Yeah, but I made the, I made the actual change to make the language consistent between the two.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Those were all my changes, that's it.
Were there more on the right, Rob, that we didn't review?
Yeah, I just said.
The term, that's one we discussed.
Um, what was it, four E? Vice chair at the chairs discretion may preside over selected applications, it just seems.
It's because if we have, like, two large subdivision applications simultaneously, and trying to like spearhead those, being able to hand the lead of that off, because I'm guessing what this is intended for.
Yeah, I just didn't understand why.
To make sure that it.
Unless it was just an instance where the chair just is like, ah, I don't feel like.
Selected applications.
Doing this today, okay, so we can leave it. Um, and then, I didn't know if we, under section four H, the town shall employ a secretary? Um, I didn't know if that.
We used to have a secretary.
And it's official, like, we should change it to.
We used to have one.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I don't know if we need to update that to just Orion's.
No, 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 no. We'll leave it there, I, I, I have to look at the record retention. Technically, the recordings constitute as minutes now, so those technically are good, but having some written form just for guidance purposes and vote count, headcount, that, that's really what we're doing.
I wonder whether we could go to the video, to now declare the video as the authentic record, and the minutes really as a, an indicator, so you don't have to sit through two hours of meeting.
Only in the case that the, well, I imagine in the case where the video is garbled for some reason, I know this would never happen to us.
Never, no.
But if, if somebody was trying to talk to their mic from a distance, and everybody heard that person except for the video.
Okay, well, that's why you have minutes as well, yeah, you have to have them.
Secretary now takes, takes her notes off of the video. So it's a downstream, you could update that to be modern, and, he says with a microphone, and allow in that paragraph.
Yeah, Jeff.
And, and allow in that paragraph to utilize AI-generated captioning of the meetings, it's a run-through and you have it.
Let's go, employee.
I've, I've seen those minutes, and to some, they're, they're successful, and others, they're not. I've seen Camden's records that they've been using AI for, and they're just not, they'll review the minutes and like, that's not what we said. And, and so, I'm a little bit distressed with that sort of form of community, form of recording.
The Zoom AI works pretty well now, yeah.
I think there's a quality aspect that.
If, if it can hear what you're saying, it works pretty well.
And perchance a, a microphone issue would sum it in place.
Yeah. So anyway, from that point, I mean, the town, town shall employ a secretary, I mean, I put a budgetary item up there, so, every year. So there's money to pay somebody to do it, or to look for AI technology to do it, or I just do it.
I mean, as far as, as far as I think the board's concerned, is the town is responsible for supervising the maintenance of the, the records. Whether they employ somebody to do it, or it's AI or whatever, I think that's, that's a different matter.
Lining up the responsibility.
Right, it's not up to us, and it's also not something that governs our activities here, so.
Right.
Okay.
All right, we happy there?
I'm to be replaced by an AI planning board.
Ooh. Should only be so lucky.
I don't know where this one's located, but. Won't let me zoom to it, anyway. Rob, do you remember where these other two comments were from?
Uh, all my comments are done.
Oh, they are, okay. You've got, given the difficulty of finding people, do we really?
I deleted that, and then deleted the other one.
And the other one. All right.
Any other comments, not in the document, that we want to talk about?
So, Orion, when will an updated version be available?
When the select board appears it, so. If y'all agree to this, then I.
Okay, do we have, do we have a motion to send a recommendation of the edits that we made tonight to the planning board for the, sorry, to the select board for the planning board bylaws for approval?
So moved.
Second by Scott. More discussion, hearing none, all in favor, six to zero. New business, I actually had a new piece of business to Tom's prognostication. Since I am the chair as of next month's meeting, but I will be on vacation on the date of next month's meeting, I would propose a change to move it to the following week, which is the twenty-ninth.
You don't trust Sam?
I do trust Sam, but I didn't want to put him on the spot.
I think I also need to check.
So I, if folks here are, you know, in favor or not in favor, please let's talk about it.
So you can, but I'm, I'm on vacation at that point, so.
You moving it to what date now?
Uh, just by a week, from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth.
We're talking August.
Yes.
August.
I'm gonna be away, but I'll zoom in.
If you're here, you'll be away, but you can zoom in. I'll, I can be here the twenty-ninth, if I can.
That's fine, I'm pretty, that's fine.
You're okay?
Yeah.
I've got parent orientation at the high school at six forty-five that night, but I should be able to make it out.
They will try to keep it brief then.
There we go.
Rob, any conflicts, you're okay on the twenty-ninth, it's just Orion, we don't know what we have for applications next month.
No, Goose River, they made an indication that they'll be at this meeting, but until I have the application, I don't know yet, so.
I don't know if we've done.
Goose River made indication they'd be at the August meeting, is that what you're saying?
I don't know if we've done an application without you before.
Yeah.
We have? So it, it's possible that it can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you, we can, we can run through it. I, I can make sure our attorney is available.
When is just for, just for my knowledge, when is your vacation on August?
I'm, I'm leaving on the twenty-ninth, I'm, like, when y'all start, I'm on the twenty-ninth, yeah. On the twenty-ninth, I'm out.
Check for room conflicts, yeah. Making that change.
For what conflicts?
Room conflicts.
Oh, here.
Let me check real quick.
Good point.
I'm gonna beach to it.
Orion's gonna beach, Jeff.
Nothing on the twenty-ninth.
Bylaws, the, the, he held at the Opera House.
Not anymore, wait, not till August.
So.
It's clear?
Yep.
Twenty-ninth is open.
Yes.
Okay, so we do a vote of whether we can move the meeting from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth?
I move, I vote, I move.
Motion second, we just need a vote.
Vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Twenty-ninth, thank you. Thank you for the motion anyway.
Well, hang on, sorry, no.
You owe me one.
Any other new business tonight?
Actually, I want to talk about this real quick, zoning map. So that got signed, there was a slight change, and I just kinda want to brief everybody here about it. So you might recall that this portion here in the downtown, there was this downtown core overlay, I don't know if y'all remember that?
Yeah, Sam pointed out that once.
Yeah, he did, and you know, I, I left it there. I haven't been able to find, well, I, I recently found the ordinance package that went along with that vote. And so anytime you do a zoning change amendment or zone amendment, like y'all have seen in the recent past, it's a standalone question, so if that would have been legit, it would have been nine thirteen downtown core overlay, standalone question, shall we create said overlay? And then there would be a section in our, I forget which section, but there's the zoning district section of our land use ordinance, it'd be a standalone thing, just like the nine ten overlay district or any of the other zones. And none of that exists, and there'd be other, you know, sections without relaying that the nine thirteen downtown core existed, so. Of everything that happened in twenty sixteen that created this overlay district, it was all made to the nine thirteen downtown. So everything that was perceived that they were creating it for that overlay, they just linked it all to nine thirteen, and the overlay never really existed, it never was created. So it doesn't harm anything, every business that was approved, or every site plan that was approved in the time of twenty sixteen to today is fine, I've checked all that, because nowhere was it like cited that we're approving, there was never a planning board motion that we're approving it in the nine thirteen downtown core, so we're fine on that, but I just wanted to bring you all up to date about that change that had to be made.
So, for clarification, all of nine thirteen has the same rules that nine sixteen overlay, was it nine sixteen?
No, that the nine thirteen, it was the nine thirteen downtown core per June whatever, twenty sixteen vote, that was the name of it.
Okay.
So everything that was thought to be with that overlay, it was all done to nine thirteen.
So, so nine thirteen is, all of nine thirteen has those same rules?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
So nothing in the ordinance needed to change, just the map?
Correct, correct.
Do we want to correct that?
I don't know, I mean, do we, I mean, that, that's kind of a question, I think, uh, once the complex is done, I think we're gonna really look at this map and probably make some serious changes to it that make sense. Not opposed to an overlay down there, I think it could be beneficial for downtown if we're going to downtown. Is it needed, I don't know, do we just beef up the downtown district at that point, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have an answer one way or another. Whatever the community wants is what we'll do, or whatever makes sense. That's the only thing I wanted to bring y'all up to speed on.
Okay. All right, so that's all the business we have today, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Tom, second by Scott. Is it second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't require a vote.
It does, it does rea- It does require a vote, it doesn't require discussion.
Doesn't require discussion, all in favor of adjournment?
There we go.
Thank you very much, senior member. We are adjourned at six forty-one.